There you go, have a great meeting.
Good evening, welcome to the 2024 Cituitt Planning Board Hearing in the Select Board Hearing Room. I'm not going to read all that other stuff that's been here since Tidings Memorial. We have a question of your gender, is there a second?
Second.
Alan Baker. Tonight, I want to ask for, Ms. Baxter, I would like you to give it to a roll call booth for our votes.
I'm just very glad.
Both votes, all votes?
Uh, all of them, thank you. At six thirty, we have a Form A and R, and one sixty-five and zero, where Summer Street is situated. Ian, zero, Summer Street, Norwell. I see that Mr. Delisi and Mr. Morse are here, would you like to come forward? I see Mr. Adams is also on the phone.
Sure. So for the record, I mean Jeff, Delisi, I'm Billy Craig Morse, and Mr. Adams, the applicant, keep on the phone. Uh, I can let Mr. Morse explain the layout, but essentially, we aggregated property and then divided it to create two lots, one which is fully conform, well actually both which are fully conforming to zoning, as a result of a special permit from the Cituitt ZBA. So we have two lots, both with frontage on Summer Street, both with access being achieved by a single common driveway over land, and the common driveway of which is solely located in the town of Norwell, and then two driveways coming off of the common driveway to serve the buildable areas of both lots.
So if I stop right there, you should be able to see. If you come to the town of Cituitt, I would appreciate it, you also look at our bylaws, in the town of Norwell, bylaws do not have a common driveway or any use of it. So we had told the applicants before that we would like to see a common driveway application.
But we're not proposing a common driveway in the town of Cituitt. So there's no reason to do that.
That's okay.
So we're not gonna do that. I mean, we've looked at the bylaws from both towns. We've obtained a special permit from the Cituitt ZBA, a conservation permit from the Cituitt Conservation Commission, a conservation permit from the Norwell Conservation Commission for the land which is in Norwell. We've obtained an A and R approval from the town of Norwell for the land that is in Norwell. We've obtained a scenic road permit from the town of Norwell for the land that is in Norwell. You don't have jurisdiction over Norwell.
We know that.
So I don't know how, why we would have to come in under a, you'll have to explain to me why we would need a permit for a common driveway from the town of Cituitt when we're not proposing a common driveway in the town of Cituitt.
So why are you not proposing a common driveway in the town of Cituitt, I guess is the question.
Because our frontage is over the town of Norwell.
All right, I don't understand something here.
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't understand, your frontage, which you received an A and R from the town of Norwell, is that correct?
Yeah.
And then the other piece of the frontage on Summer Street in Cituitt.
Is all wet.
Is all wet. Did you receive an A and R approval from the zoning Board of Appeals?
Yeah, we received an approval from the zoning Board of Appeals, they don't issue A and Rs.
That's right, we do.
Right.
We do, and you know what, I'm gonna sit here and tell you, your frontage on Summer Street is illusionary. I don't care what ZBA gave you, I really don't. And I don't care that there's an easement that shows utilities and what have you. This is supposed to be frontage on Summer Street to give you access.
Ian, let's lower this for a second, okay? I think that the town of Cituitt, I think I heard Karen indicate at the last meeting that she spoke with the town council. If we're providing access to both lots by a common driveway coming in off of the town of Norwell, you have access for both lots, right?
But you're not showing the common driveway coming to the block of Cituitt.
We're, we are, we're showing it on the plan.
But you're not, Jeff, what, the definition of the common driveway in Cituitt, the common driveway area is the entire access area for the purposes of benefiting adjoining properties. The act, yeah, this, this access easement, access and utility easement, which you have recorded, is not a common driveway, it goes across all of lot one to get to lot two. That being said, that, that being said, I did talk to town council last time, and town council opined that we should, the planning board should probably endorse the Form A because, and then we would take it out, take up everything in the common driveway. You're saying now, you're not even applying for a common driveway in Cituitt, which I think you really need because of the definition of our common driveway. Does this, does this have, does this have access tonight? In my opinion, yes it does, but I'm not the board, because you have a common driveway coming through Norwell and you have an access and utility easement, but that doesn't mean you're gonna get a building.
We, we have a common driveway permit from the town of Norwell.
Right.
Okay? That common driveway permit gives access to both lots. We've, we've recorded a homeowners association agreement, a declaration of easement, a declaration of restrictions, and we have a common driveway which gives access. The question tonight is whether the board is gonna endorse an A and R plan. And that's what I think the board ought to be focused on. If there's an issue with getting a building permit in the future, that's another issue, but we're, we're speaking specifically about, do these lots show frontage and access?
One does, and as far as I'm concerned, the other one doesn't. And we ran into the same problem at Norwood, and that is a vote that I regret. I shouldn't have said no to that Form A, because their access was illusionary. And you're fifty-foot frontage on Summer Street is all wetlands, and unless you can build a bridge, it's illusionary, and by definition of an A and R, you have to have frontage on an approved way, and this is not an approved way. Therefore, you don't have my vote, no matter what you say, I cannot endorse this Form A. Regardless of what town council has said, I won't endorse it. It's, you do not have access on fifty feet of frontage, which you did receive from, I'm sure, zoning Board of Appeals.
You did.
Right, but a fifty-foot access from the zoning Board of Appeals does not give you a Form A, that kind of thing is wrong.
Yeah.
This, this access on lot two has frontage on an approved way, Summer Street is a publicly owned and maintained way.
I agree, I absolutely agree with that.
There's upland access across the front block line here. You can walk from Summer Street one to this block without crossing wetlands. It's upland access for a distance greater than fifty feet, longest. Could you cross a wetland? Absolutely you could. You'd have to go to the Conservation Commission and get approval. The first thing they would ask is, is there an alternative to provide upland access? And in this case, there is, that alternative is a byright common driveway located outside of the wetlands, that's why it was designed that way. Could you build a bridge? Could you cross the wetlands? Hundred percent, absolutely you could. You have upland access, you can walk from Summer Street onto this property without crossing a wetland. You have more than fifty feet of linear measurement.
Excuse me, where, where, where can you walk from Summer Street to the buildable lot area without crossing a wetland, because the wetland seems to go right through here, the line is here, up to the buildable portion of the lot. I'm just asking, I'm trying to understand where, where you're saying that you can walk to the buildable lot area.
That's not what I said, what I said is you can walk from Summer Street onto the lot, you can walk onto the lot.
Yeah, with your, with your.
Right here, without crossing any wetlands, onto the lot, you can get physical access onto the property.
Where? Where, right at the front, Ian, right at the, right at the front.
From here to here. There's a hundred and, hundred and eleven feet of upland access on my scale.
I don't, all right. This, so this, Summer Street is here.
Right.
This is, this is the wetland line right here, so you can walk from Summer Street into this upland lot right here, so that, that's your, that you.
But that's got fifty feet.
I don't know, I mean.
That distance is seventy feet. The upland access onto the lot.
But you are not putting access from Summer Street in this seventy feet, whatever you've got here, to this walkway, to walk out back. You are telling us you're gonna go through the town of Norwell to access over Cituitt, but you've said that you're not going to apply for a built law, common driveway.
We, kind of, so, the common driveways in the town of Norwell are approved through the building department up to a hundred feet. We included in our application, I believe, a copy of the reported common driveway plan. What this is, is we're coming in with a common driveway for a hundred feet, and then the driveway splits off, one going to the existing home, one sixty-five, the other one going to lot two. The entirety of that common driveway is in the town of Norwell, none of the common driveways in the town of Cituitt. The common driveways that I've been involved in in the town of Cituitt, we've put lines on the plans calling them, limiting the common area to where it's traversed by two or more lots. When the, when the driveway goes to access a single lot, it's just a driveway. It's only common in the area that's served by two homes. In this case here, the only common portion of the driveway is the first hundred feet, which is entirely in the town of Norwell. We applied for the permit, we got it, we got permission to build the driveway from the Norwell Conservation Commission and the Cituitt Conservation Commission.
So after that first hundred feet, it no longer is a common driveway, is that what you're saying?
It's not common at that point, because one lot breaks off to the left, and the other lot will break off to the right.
But that's not true, you have to go, this goes through the whole of lot one to get to lot two. You used to say that the owner of lot, of the one, how's it, one sixty-five, wouldn't use the driveway over there. I, I do think that this has access in front, yeah, I mean, the access, they, they have, they have a common driveway, they have recorded an access easement. There is, there is technically room to get on the upland, you can't get to the buildable portion of the upland area, but they did get the fifty-foot frontage special permit from the ZBA. That being said, I, I don't know that it's gonna be able to get a building permit without a common driveway in Cituitt. But I didn't think, I didn't think for the purposes of the planning board, it has access and frontage. You can, you can, you can disagree if, if you want, but I mean, that's, that, that's how I see it, I think that's probably, you know, how town councils saw it last time, when town council opined, he thought the planning board should endorse and take it up in the common driveway, which we're trying to do.
But they're not coming forward on that.
Unless the, unless the building inspector requires us to, we haven't gotten to that point. It's possible that he would. And it's my opinion that he doesn't need to, and I'll explain that to him, and he's the zoning enforcement officer, and whichever way he falls on it, I'm sure Karen's gonna explain her position, if she hasn't already. So, we might be back here. But we're here tonight for an A and R plan, which shows frontage and provides access.
But your access is over an easement through lot one of the lot two, am I understanding that correctly, or not?
Your, our ax, our common access is over a common driveway, and then a driveway splits off in an easement area to access the lot two land, over the easement being over lot one. I'm not sure that there's anything wrong with that, we'll find out when we apply for a building permit.
Except that I want to say, again, and this is for Gary Miller, you're not, this is my opinion, is that once you cross into the town of Cituitt, you're really abailed by our bylaws.
Well, we'll find out, I mean, it's nice that you have that opinion, Patty, we'll find out from the person that, who matters, who's the building inspector, whose job it is to enforce the zoning bylaw.
Well, don't forget, he's not the only one that's talked about.
But I get it, yeah.
So, you know, we, we, we designed this new common driveway bylaw that was passed so that people would not arbitrarily decide where they want to put driveways, that, that's why it was designed. It is very specific language as to what that common driveway means. Now, you know, we've all been in this game for a long time, and you know, and we've all been named because of an interpretation that he said, she said. It is discouraging that every time somebody comes before us, whether it's this board, zoning conservation, the vagina liaison, so I hear all the bad news in town, that everybody's constantly asking for forgiveness and never for permission. Now, we asked you the last time you came to please apply for a common driveway, and I have to tell you, per usual, very often, our opinion is not accepted as something that we should consider, and I think that this is a perfect example of how that's happened to us. That it just, you know, we have an opinion, and it, it kind of seems to me that we kind of go whatever, whoever's gonna give us the best opinion that they can. I think that this has been a hinky project from date prior. Once we start, like I said, Norwood was the first one we should have worked out less about that, to not divide these property lines. Well, you, you can continue with what you have to say, I am very concerned that this does not need our bylaw for a common driveway, that's all. So.
Right, does the board understand what's before you tonight, and it's only the A and R?
Yeah.
Only the A and R is before you.
So we're trying to prevent, from that whole.
We're not, we're not trying to subvert, we're not trying to subvert the common driveway requirement by creating a common driveway on lot one to serve lot two. We have nowhere to put a common driveway on lot two, and the only area that we can put it on lot one is in, within the town of Norwell. The question is, do we need a common driveway to serve, a common driveway permit from the town of Cituitt to serve the driveway which is not common that accesses lot two? It's, 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 I understand that you're frustrated that sometimes your interpretation is that people subvert the planning board or willy-nilly do what they want and decide where they want common driveways. We don't have a choice to put it in the town of Cituitt coming off of Summer Street at all here. This is a circumstance truly of an oddity with respect to this land, because a portion of it is in Norwell, a portion is in Cituitt. But the, I can see your, I can see your frustration, and I hope that you could see ours, we're not, you know, we, we have a driveway that is a driveway within an easement that doesn't serve two lots. So why should it be common? But, but that's a question. That's a question that I guess we can find the answer, and it's possible we'll be back in front of the board tonight in A and R.
So you did, you did get a couple comments, which I forwarded onto the applicant. Conservation has issued order conditions regarding the wetland line and driveway work, including utilities under it. They have not recorded the orders yet, because they need lots to have them recorded. And then we had a comment from the water department, in order to access Cituitt water, develop what would need to extend main and install fire hydrant, and have extended main. And the water is coming from, I've been told the water is coming from the lot. So, but this is the comment that the Cituitt Water Department, because that's who gets the copies of the ARs, the Cituitt. So much to say that we'll probably see you guys here again.
It's possible.
Any other comment?
Well, um. I'm going to go ahead and ask my question if it's.
Can you speak up, Liz?
Yes, I, I'm new on the board, so excuse me if my question has already been answered, but where it says existing gravel driveway to be abandoned, now is a driveway that serves one sixty-five, existing mango family lawn, right?
Yes.
So with the common driveway easement and the other lot being developed, where would the driveway be for one sixty-five?
It comes up.
So, but where, and then it breaks off, where's the breakup?
Does it break off right here at this structure that, like at that little elbow there?
Yes.
So it breaks off on the Norwell side?
Correct, on the Norwell side.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, well, yeah, and so you look here, you should go down.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed it, okay.
These old country.
I know.
Properties, they're real confusing, and then when the walls come back, you're real confused, right, I don't know what that way is.
We're gonna have less than cur, less than curvious area, I think, closer to the wetland, which is good.
Yeah.
So we're, you know, but then we're gonna, you know, there's gonna be gravel up closer, but we think that it's actually, you know, you're eliminating two entrances off of Summer Street for purposes of, say, safety. We're creating a single point of access to the property as opposed to two within a hundred feet of one another, which is a positive, right? Not necessarily sailing before you, but, you know, one of the primary purposes of, you know, but, you know, requiring an A and R plan is to ensure vital access, and I think that we do that at very least here. It's a question, this is a funky question of jurisdiction, and we'll have to vet it. I've obviously got a conversation with the building inspector already.
And what did he have to say to us?
Well, I'll, you know.
Summarize that for us?
I, I'll keep it, I'll keep it to myself, I, I feel confident that that, you know, he understands what we're trying to accomplish here, and it's a question of applying the zoning bylaw and figuring out if it's required or not in the town of Cituitt. So.
I would tell you, I have not had a conversation with the woman who's on this project.
We, you know, I did, because we, Craig and I identified this issue when we first started, and I wanted to feel comfortable spending Mr. Adams's time and money designing something that I hope to be able to get approved ultimately.
Ian, anything else?
I stand by what I said, and trap the access over the frontage on Summer Street. I contend that the access is illusionary, I don't care about common driveway easement. I may be one hundred percent wrong in all of this, but an A and R is supposed to have access. It doesn't have access.
Common driveway permit, town level.
I am talking about Cituitt.
Well, you called it an easement, and I just want you to know, we have a permit.
You may have all the permits in the world, you do not have bona fide access on Summer, from Summer Street, onto lot two.
I completely disagree, that's totally wrong.
Well, then I'm wrong.
Thanks, Andrew Pegg, Matt?
Bill or Rashad?
Karen? You do want to see about frustration, like, you know, this comes before us about more than once.
I can't imagine this back, I don't, this comes before you.
It's before us at least three times since I've been on this committee. And can I tell you, the three times, we've been, we don't care a single time.
Have you approved the A and R plan each time?
Yeah, but definitely these common driveways, which they're coming and not coming, they're going here, they're going there, so it's why we had to rewrite our common driveway bylaw, so that people could put driveways anywhere they wanted to, so that was what if I drive, we don't just write bylaws because we have nothing else to do. You know, they take a lot of time or a lot of effort, and nobody at the time we liked to talk about zoning bylaws. So as far as an A and R, if we have to endorse an A and R, we don't really have much to hate or hate or doubt, but we may have something to hate or hate or because of the common driveway if a liability commissioner decides to read our bylaw, and we do. Darren? Anybody else want to? Mr. Adams, would you like to contribute anything to our conversation?
Uh, no comment, I'm on my side.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the board ready for motion? Yes. We have a new admin interview, getting us to where it's going. Can you buy a copy?
I want to endorse as a approval of subdivision control while not required, plan, plan in Cituitt mass and Norwell mass, who hold on required division of land, one sixty-five and zero, near Summer Street, Cituitt assessors parcels twenty-three dash one dash thirty-eight dash F and twenty-four dash two dash forty-nine B and zero, Summer Street, Norwell, assessors parcel ten dash one, map three A, dated April twenty-five, twenty twenty-four, revised September twenty-five, twenty twenty-four, by Jason Scott, Professional Land Sphare, of Force Engineering Company, Inc. For the applicant, owner Adams Equity Partners LLC, as the division of plan is not a subdivision because every law shown on the plan has frontage of at least the distance presently required by the Cituitt zone bylaw on the public way of Summer Street. There was adequate frontage on Summer Street for both lots and a common driveway in Norwell, and an access and utility easement provided for driveway to lot two providing access. The driveway to lot two across lot one, we need a common driveway under the Cituitt zone bylaw. A fifty-foot frontage lot has been granted by the Cituitt Zone Board of Appeals. The Norwell Planning Board has issued a permit for a common driveway in Norwell of approximately nine to two feet.
So, can I, before you vote, may I say something about the motion as it's being framed?
We need a second for discussion. Okay, second for discussion.
Are you, so, when you, when your motion says it needs a common driveway permit from the town of Cituitt, are, are, are you acting as the zoning enforcement officer? Is that a condition of approval, or is that just a general statement of opinion? I, I'm trying to understand, because that, as we discussed tonight, as Karen even indicated, that's not, not your call. And I'm concerned that if you keep that language in there, when we go and apply for a building permit, someone's gonna read that and say, oh, that's kind of a condition of approval, we can't give you that, we can't give you a building permit until you get a.
I think you're reading too much, it's a statement, first of all, as you very well know, you can't condition a Form A.
Yeah, but words matter.
And so, you know, what gets recorded is the plan, this gets filed with the, the town clerk.
Okay, so, as that was framed, it doesn't necessarily matter unless it contains a condition of approval?
This is what I.
So long as you endorse it?
But what I am reading here has frontage of at least the distance presently required in the Cituitt zoning bylaw on public way of Summer Street. On the public way of Summer Street.
I, I just, look, this is important to me, I just wanna make sure I. I, I just, look, this is important to me. I just wanna make sure I understand, okay? There's language in what you just read, it's not in front of me, which talks about a common driveway in the town of Situate. Am I wrong, or did I hear that? Did I hear that wrong?
Did you? You did hear that.
Okay, so are you saying in this motion that all of a sudden we need a common driveway when there's a question of whether we need a common driveway, that is to be determined by the building inspector? That's what I wanna know. I, I think that language confuses the issue. If you wanna have a conversation with the building inspector, that's one thing, but to put it in a motion and have the body vote on it as if it's the truth when it in fact might not be, when all we're doing is voting on whether this, these two lots have frontage?
They don't.
In your opinion?
In my opinion, they do not.
Right, so the question is.
Do you wanna know if it should strike the language?
Or just put the word "may"?
I know. Karen, do this come from town council? No, it's, it did not come from town council. I mean, town council applied, like I said previously, that he would endorse the Form A and take up everything else in the common driveway. So with that interpretation, I believe town council believes a common driveway is needed. And I will reclarify that with town council. If you wanna say that the driveway to Lot Two across One may need a common driveway, then that's how, I, I don't want that sentence to go away, but I'd be willing to change it to "may".
That's all I ask. And, and as obviously, um, I don't know, amped up, emotional, whatever the word is. You know I have a great deal of respect for you, and I have a great deal of respect for you, and just because you, I don't know you guys, but you guys are kinda disagreeing. And I, I want you to understand that this is a healthy disagreement. I just have a very strong opinion about it, as do you. I'm not trying to be upsetting to you in the least.
Here's the thing. I disagree with you. I would never, ever, under any circumstances, tell you that you were wrong. Ever. Because that precludes any type of debate, any type of discussion. And therefore, I would respectfully ask, you could disagree with me. I may or may not be wrong, I may or may not be right. But, I mean, we have.
Fair enough.
Okay, and, and this is not personal. This is just, I've been on this board a long time, and I read things one way, and you can interpret them another way, and that's okay. That is okay. And if I wanted to get cross with the Zone Board of Appeals, I could. Because they.
I've never seen you get crossed with ZB before.
Because I've never had the opportunity, because they do things under cloak of darkness.
I don't want to be so out of the park there. But we will, we will bring to them, we will put the work in.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
Okay. Stephanie, is it then due?
Stephanie's in.
Okay. I would play with. Don't roll, you're on a roll, yes?
Ms. Lambert?
No.
Ms., Ms. Burbine?
No.
Ms. Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Love?
Aye. So what, what did we do there?
We, we failed.
We split.
We split, and because it was a tie vote, it becomes a no. No.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, you need a majority.
Okay.
Yeah, for this majority, we don't have a majority here. So they effectively not, voted not to endorse.
A Form A.
Unfortunate. That goes against what you've done in the past, right?
I disagree. To put, I, I've got that only because I, I do believe that that's illusionary frontage, and I, I do believe that i- if he came to us with the common driveway opinion, that, that would have been what we asked for to lead you in that right direction to give you approval. So again, it's, it's unfortunate, and it is an interpretation, but that's why we're here, and we may not be here next year. I mean, that's how that goes, right? Come back, yeah, right? It's, um, it's discouraging, but not everybody can agree, and we all know that, and there's, there's nothing can be said about that. But these properties that lie in two different towns are very disconcerting to people on both sides. This, this means that we are looking at two different sets of bylaws and how this post-interpret Norwell and this post-interpret ours. Um, I don't know anybody on the Norwell Planning Board or on the Insulin Board, so there's approximately no conversation. But, um, we had a healthy conversation, and Mr. Pritchard is not here today, unfortunately, to, as verbose as he can be, and to be as strident as he can be, which he was the last time we were here, and very clearly asked, um, for a natural codey common driveway in your application.
So, um, I just wanna make sure, is this in your record, this common driveway permit?
I gave them all the materials you gave me, so that was in that municipal stuff, I believe.
Just in case it's not, may I in- insert it into the record?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for the night. Yeah, it, it definitely. Listen. Red up, we've told that.
No.
Five, six forty five, we're gonna endorse the dis-surety for managing board post cottage port development. So we trust in your views, right? Am I up?
Build a more framework?
Think we're back before?
I think so.
How are you?
I think I'm okay.
What's going on with the cottage ports? I give a surety.
Okay.
Careful endorsement.
Yes, for sure.
So how are these common laws, John, in this speech?
Just cleaning up very nicely, thank you.
And you're here. Mr. Burke, do you have anything to say to us about this order?
Well, not really.
Not really. You know, technically applicants are supposed to present their case, not to tell us what's gonna be case. They know what's happening, but here for.
And TV went and what was.
They're here for endorsement.
Yeah.
They, the plans have been reviewed, they've included what they need to for endorsement, so I believe the plans can be endorsed.
Okay.
They're also here to set surety. Um, you have a copy?
Yep.
Of the estimate for surety. Um, you know, your, the petition says they have to include certain things in it, in the surety estimate, and I believe they have. It's not like the town would ever take the project and do it, but I think this is a fair, and then it's a fair estimate, and I would recommend that you, um, have cash or bond for a hundred fifty five thousand. So I just wanna give you a little heads up that when you give us this, you have to put the name of your project on the top of it, okay? We had to get my dad.
Sorry, girl.
So you want to see a hundred fifty thousand, one hundred dollars? No, a hundred fifty five, I don't recommend it. Oh, sorry. I mean, the motion is for a hundred fifty five thousand, round it, round it up to the nearest even increment, it's a lot, makes it a lot easier to do bond or cash that way.
Okay.
And bond or cash will be the only things that the treasurer will accept for surety. Yeah, those, they want all their money up for it, just to get. Anything else, gentlemen? You all said to give us your money?
As so request.
Yep.
They're, they're working on conditions, I mean, that, I mean, I sent a list of things that they need to accomplish prior to getting a building permit, and they are, they are working on their conditions. They hope to start construction, they dedicated this block.
Oh, okay. You're on the one?
Yep, also.
Okay.
Everything is trying to get the house down, look, you've done all that, so it's all, it's in the font, the permits, so we'll try and move forward on completion of the building permit.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
We do. So much. I move to endorse the site plan administrative review for the four cottage port development special permit for density and stormwater permit in the village center and neighborhood district, Ringlish Gateway District, Ringlish Village Center Sub-District, B C N, G D G, G B C, at nineteen, at nineteen fourth place, as all of the conditions required prior to endorsement have been addressed. I move to set surety at one hundred fifty five thousand dollars of bond or cash.
Who's second?
Second.
Miss action, do you have a call?
Yes, Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Burbine?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Love?
Yes.
All set to go, guys?
Second one.
Back again.
Thank you.
That was silly.
We needed it, we need it.
Yeah.
Yep, good one.
Once a year is not so bad.
Thank you, happy to see you guys.
Have you retired, Steve?
I thought you were.
You, Mr. Burke, must be up before I can see.
I enjoy the noise.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All business, move business, stars, call the administrator.
Yeah, approve minutes, do we have minutes?
Yes.
Accounting?
Oh, Gwen?
No, I haven't been here.
Okay, uh, I move to approve the following requisitions. Fifty six dollars and thirty two cents to Camp Joseph Town Planner Mileage Reversment. One thousand eight hundred eighty dollars to Horsey Group for seaside completion review of site conditions and basins. And five thousand thirty three dollars and ninety eight cents to AJ Realty Trust for the bond release for nine Laurelwood Lot Five Stormwater Permit.
Second.
Second.
My favorite. Look, you do I.
Aye, aye, aye.
I like that. Yeah, I like that.
Do I have minutes? If you have any?
Yeah.
Now, don't leave no motion, it's bound.
Actually, I have two so far.
I know. I moved.
Really?
Okay. I move to approve the meeting minutes of the Situate Planning Board, September twenty sixth, twenty twenty four.
Your second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, let's move.
Oh, our favorite, M V T A, come to the room.
Yeah, guess what, there's no update. Okay, but haven't heard anything, so, uh, we're just folding tight till they get in touch with us.
And Milton's been all over the press.
All over, it was on national news.
I heard an interesting show on, or they're talking, or on NPR News about the issue, and I think they said seventy, there's a hundred and seven seventy meters, I think they said seven to seven approved.
No, no, that's not what they said. It's seventy seven have approved zoning.
Zoning, okay.
Okay, only thirty three, maybe thirty, thirty six have then approved as meeting full compliance.
Will require them.
Right, but.
And they're one of them.
No, we're not. We have approved, we've approved the zoning for it.
Yeah.
We're waiting, we've submitted all our stuff for compliance, we're waiting for them to say, yes, yes, you're complying. So, I mean, we're hoping. We submitted July twenty fifth, they told us we, our application was complete August twenty sixth, because they wanted more things, they wanted things submitted in a different format that they didn't tell us about.
They're ridiculous.
And they wanted things that we had already submitted. So we'll see when, they're supposed to get nine dates.
And now when's the pork?
I don't know. It's either gonna be October twenty sixth or November twenty sixth.
We'll be back for on Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
How's that?
Yeah, there's a lot of discussion about Milton.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a discussion about that. Being interesting, an interesting, uh, point submitting by the town boys, so we'll see whether they follow that. Young committee in their, they're showing their broken minds. Uh, so we have our zoning for our twenty twenty five town meeting on next. Wait, which I think it's gonna be done today is on November and key, we're going to this.
Oh.
I guess there's a town meeting on November eighteen.
And we don't have anything.
We don't have anything on that town meeting. So based on the last planning board meeting, you asked me to go back and fit together the definition of cooking and ki- kitchen facility and put them together. I, I have done that, so there, you have a marked up copy and you have a clean copy. Uh, so there's a lot different colors and a different process. But I, I, I did that, and I took out the definition of kitchen facilities. Uh, other than that, I have really made no other changes. But I did forward the bylaw to town council for review, and I will be talking with town council tomorrow. They answered me, I mean, I think the wording is better fortunately, but there's no really forgiveness. Which always hits us a lot, I guess, you know?
And, um, we'd like to someone to look at, to know what we're talking about.
Listen, you have a lift, we have a zoning, that, well, me and you who have a lift, you're in your ignorance, giant surprise.
I don't know, probably.
How are you, really, have you not?
No, but I have, so on page three thirteen, um, five thirty, one A, section act.
Oh, no.
That's a change that was made, because it's a red, yes, accelerated, not being sure.
Yes. That, that's been in there since the very beginning.
Okay.
But that's new for. But that's new for the, that's new for the bylaw.
Correct.
Because that's required, that's part of the definition that we can say they can't be used for short-term rentals.
Yes.
I just wanna clarify that, yeah.
Yeah, so first I did red changes, then I did blue changes, then I did green changes.
Oh, okay.
So I tried to show you how, how I got a progression.
Okay, right, so I thought that that was the original.
That one, that one, yeah, you're correct, yeah. Everything looks good, I mean, it's kind of waiting, like it's.
It is what it is.
It is what it is, we have no way around this, it's, the government wants us to use this. Mom, you all set there? So then we do, did anybody?
I do.
I, I only answered as well, okay, go ahead.
Oh, all right, I did. C P C. It was on Monday night. And they do have three items on the upcoming town meeting. One of them is some study or whatever for bike paths to a Situate. And another one is for bike racks at the beaches, they have to be permanent. And the final one is funds for looking into the borderhead of the property going forward with of five oh one three C, um, making it a nonprofit. And then.
Didn't somebody get a grant for bike, didn't the town get money for twenty five bike racks or something?
Yeah, from M A P C.
Yeah. And so.
Where is it?
How does that fit in with that?
That's a very great question, which I will ask. Thank you. All right, and as far as Monday night's meeting, Cedar Point wants a flagpole.
What?
And that, you know, that little park that's right there, where Jericho Road goes one way and, okay? They want a park. And Jada Ball wants a park. Cedar Point Association, to the tune of I think it's two thousand dollars.
So.
Wants a park. So they, uh, a flagpole, by the last, thank you very much. And then the next one is, I'll save that for last. Then this property acquisition, don't have a price on it yet. It's out on Clap Road, and if you, the Wild Goose Hill, Benarang. And you know, with that sort of old brown pond is on the right hand side, before you get to Hardest Trail?
I am.
Okay, it's really filled with whatever.
Duckies.
Okay, there's two lots. And um, they're, it's basically unbuildable, so they're going to give C P C a press. And then. Um, they told me who it was. Funny. They call it the something or other. Dishpan.
Yeah.
The dishpan.
Well, it was to skate, yeah.
Yeah, well, I don't think you can skate among the weeds.
Well, I know, to skate.
Well, I'm not, just safe.
Wow. And so the last one was.
I just asked what benefit doesn't have to the town to happen?
It completes a lot of, um, open space in terms of trails. It connects with the McAllister property over on Baca Col and Crest. It connects to Bates Lane. It just is a big, huge loop. It's like 17 acres.
It's big enough to connect the veins.
Yeah, is this not gated property as well?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, I'm happy to deal.
Okay. All right.
She doesn't have a face.
All are, and then, but wait, there's more. Um, the situat basketball court renovation, if it tuned off. This is the Albus Lausti. This may be the paper. It was almost 100,000 dollars.
Over here at the high school?
No, excuse me. 859,000 dollars.
At the high school?
At the high school. We, we do two tennis, two, um. Basketball courts because.
The tennis courts are bigger.
They're almost finished. They'll be finished probably by November. And this is, um. I guess it needs to be done, it's used all the time.
A lot, a lot of it.
And of course, then there were a couple of people who want pickleball courts before basketball courts. It's here to pick a ball for us.
Well, I'm sure it's not here. I actually pick a ball, it's not here.
I know. At any rate, one of the issues of, there are. The two that they're going to replace and this third basketball, with this pavement or whatever. If they were to resurface that one and make that into pickleball. Whatever. Problem is, when the neighbors up above.
Put a bad subject, yeah, right.
Right, when the neighbors might listening to it. Be a bad boy. So that's an issue too. Same thing.
Well, I, I personally think that this pickleball thing is, 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 is just never gonna resolve itself because there. There are so many towns that have lawsuits against them. There are places you're gonna only play for a two hours every other Tuesday. I mean, they're so restrictive. People really find it really offensive. Uh, it's just, and they tend to be at schools, which tend to be your residential neighborhoods. So they have kind of no way around that. So I, they'll have time to try to run the school. I don't know. I can't say they're.
But seniors are into the victim.
So they're gonna do it down the old gates.
Yes, they're going to take two basketball, two tennis courts with. Toll Run's money and resurface them.
Some.
Some off. That's another.
The balance.
Huh?
The balance.
What's left?
Cause I want 200,000.
I don't wanna know what they did with the rest of it.
Okay.
I don't wanna know. That is a very slow subject. Out of that whole project, we owe them 400.
Yeah.
That was absurd.
It's all I'm gonna show.
That was.
Billions of dollars.
The boys laughing.
Billions of dollars. Well, I went to conservation. Uh, and went to zoning and as I said, true, this is always, this can was, I am so tired. So tired of people asking for forgiveness, friends, the permission. It is overwhelming that nobody can come and do the right thing. No, first cover art. Um, we very rarely say no. We try to help you make your project belong better. Um, and people just, and people just really, really, and. You know, it's not like these people who are the developers and contractors do not do work in this town every single day, the week, and know what our bylaws are. I find that infuriating. My little basis alive, I'm so angry about it, about this constant, constant, we're gonna do whatever we want. And it doesn't matter what you say, cause you know what, we're gonna do it. We're gonna come and say, oops, didn't know, which happened twice to conservation. Oh, didn't know we were supposed to do that. Yes, you did. Of course you did. The person building the property knew that. And your response was, oh, we didn't think it was all that important. It's hugely important. So it's, it's discouraging and it makes it look like we're not doing our job. We spent hours doing this stuff every single week. It's kind of like, I'm gonna do whatever we want. So, uh, conservation, I have shop boards for two developers, uh, one of which will be on zoning next week, on the 18th or whatever it is. Um. And we'll, we'll see if we all keep it on the same page. I'd like to be in the same book, if not on the same page, it might be nice. Please, never mind, I'm, read the zoning agenda. Karen, you have anything on your. Planning and development report?
We're busy and, um, we're, you know, I think we're gonna have a busy plot.
Okay.
I want to take a motion, gentlemen.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.